Time is not, time is not, we have seen the pastor of Koyintu, we have seen him.
We have Pastor Amol Raj, who has come here from Koyintu.
Last time you came to prayer camp, you will know about it.
Many of you would know, probably last time if you attended the meeting, you definitely have seen him.
I have heard about him, he is a great worshipper, he is a great worshipper. And he has done many things in India, he has done many things in India. I have been praying for him for a long time. He has changed everything in India.
Indeed, the last time when I went to India, I went to Korsur and the pastor was preaching there and I could see a lot of transformation and change in many of the people's life, in many of the people's lives, as he taught the word of God.
I am sure whoever has come here today, you will definitely go out of this place, not in the same way that you have come in, but with transform, you will be transformed as you move out of this place. Sit with the heart of expectation and I am sure God will speak to you this evening.
Let us close our eyes and look to the Lord in prayer and especially pray for the man of God.
Thank you Father. Thank you Father.
Country of God, glory to God, praise you Father, praise you Father. We thank you for this beautiful day my master. We thank you Lord God for you have brought you servant or father all the way from India. Even this evening, we pray that you will speak to us through your man of God. We pray that the word of God will come and it will resurrect us and it will do its work in our lives. For the very purpose and the reason why you have brought him into this place, we pray that you would do it this evening. Father pray that everyone here in this place will be transformed and will be revived. We thank you because you are going to work this evening. Father, we cover this place with the blood of Jesus Christ. We pray Lord God, all the bonds of the evil one will be broken in this place. Father, that we pray that you will open up each one of our hearts and eyes. Father speak to us. We pray that you our name will be lifted high this evening. In Jesus precious name we pray. Just give a hands to get it. Praise the Lord. In the matchless name of Jesus Christ, I would like to greet you all. Let God's name be glorified this evening. Many of you here, I believe you would have already seen me. So I am not going to introduce about myself a lot. God bless you this evening. I thank the Almighty God for giving me yet another opportunity to come here in this country. Indeed, I have been praying about this three days prayer camp and I have been continuously upholding that in my prayers. And I believe all my prayers will be answered and God will do some amazing things in the next three days as we have the prayer camp. And even though we have our commitments back in India, we do ministry, lot of ministry in the country of India, but when God opens doors in these countries, we come and we preach the word of God even in this place. Right from the time I came into this country, I have been continuously praying. And I have been praying that there will be a revival that will come in this nation. And I believe there is a burden in my heart that the churches here will be revived, will be revived again. And this evening, I would like to talk to you from the word of God. Before we could start with the word of God, I would like to say something and you need to, I would like to draw your attention to something. The word of God is not to put somebody down. The word of God will instruct us and will help us to get our lives better. We will read a particular passage from the Bible. And I am going to choose a particular verse from, from the word of God. Let us turn our Bibles to James chapter 3, 2, and verse 2. The word of God says, for we stumble in many things. Today's headline of probably the, the heading of, of the today's message is mistakes. Many times we don't realize how many mistakes we do in our life, how many mistakes we have in our life. One day I was having a conversation with Pastor El Joseph. And his church has got lots and lots, thousands and thousands of believers who worship in his church. There are hundreds of churches for him. And not only that, many servants of God, many ministers of God are under him, are working in his, under his banner. There are many vehicles which goes out and takes people and brings them into the church. And that man of God was saying to me. And he asked me a question, he asked me, if God comes to you right now and if God is asking you something to ask, what would you ask? And I was not sure, what should I ask God, so I was just quiet. He asked me what I would ask from God. I said, I don't know pastor, so let me know what you would do. For the, the mistakes that the other people do is very clearly visible for us, very easily it is visible. Unfortunately, it doesn't work the same thing with this, with self, we are not able to realize how many mistakes that we do on a day to day basis. Probably some of these mistakes will prevent me from getting into the kingdom of God. And he said, I would ask God for me, that God will show me the mistakes that I do in my life, so that I will understand and I will correct myself, so that nothing of, none of those mistakes will hinder me from going into the kingdom of God. And many people probably could ask for money, for, people could ask for homes and cars and so on and so forth, only people will be focusing about materialistic things. But today, as we sit and as we are ready to listen to the word of God, we need to have such an attitude and we need to humble ourselves in the presence of God and wait for the word of God to correct us. The word of God is so beautiful and James says in chapter 3 and verse 2, for we all stumble in many things. There is something called self-righteousness in each and every person in their life. Whenever that, that kind of a feeling that comes, whenever self-righteousness comes into our life, that we think we are right in everything that we do. And when we start to think in that manner, we move from the limits of God and we move into a new zone, an unknown zone. God has given me the ministry of deliverance and healing. I could, I could preach a beautiful message for you that you will all enjoy, that you will all love. But when it comes to the church, the message of God has to be directed to the people, to the needs of the church and it's very important that I do that part today. The, the objective of God is that, that we will be prepared, the church will be prepared when the second, during the second coming. So we are in a situation right now, that we need to reform the church. And on the basis of the word of God, the churches needs to be reformed, it needs to be revived. We are going to see what are the mistakes that the disciples did. The disciples were always with Jesus, lived with Jesus, died with Jesus. And all these disciples, they loved God, they loved Jesus Christ so much. And all these disciples didn't want to leave God, didn't want to leave Jesus, they want to stay along with Jesus all the days of their life. They left everything of their own and they wanted to follow Christ alone. But still, there were some mistakes that they committed in their life. And those mistakes are not those mistakes which is going to stop the progress in their Christian life, in their spiritual life. Now, I am going to say a lot of mistakes probably that you might do, but these, the way that I am going to, the reason I am saying this is not to stop you or not to put you down. Only the people who have fallen, we, as we read history, we can understand, the people who have fallen into sin, but when they, when they have, when they have come out of it and when they have worked with the Lord, God has used them really in a nice way. God is a good God and God will show today the mistakes that we might be doing in our lives. Let us turn our Bibles to Matthew chapter 8 and verse 25. Then his disciples came to him and awoke him saying, Lord, save us, we are perishing. We need to focus on something very important in this scripture. It is the same thing what the word of God says in March chapter 3 and verse 38. And they are asking, are you not concerned that we are going to die? Now, the disciples and Jesus, they go on in a boat and they have to go through a passage of sea. Now, it was Jesus who is calling his disciples, let's go to the other side and he is taking all the disciples along with him in a boat and they are going. And as the boat was moving on, he was fast asleep in the boat. And there was a great, great tempest in the sea and there were waves which was crashing against the boat. And as the waves started to crash against the boat, they couldn't sail the boat as they wanted, they couldn't steer the boat, so they were thinking probably the boat is going to collapse. And they were really afraid because of the waves and they were really terrified. They were terrified to the cold, that they thought that they are going to perish, they are going to die because the boat is going to collapse. And during that time, because of the fear, they went to Jesus, they approached him and they started to wake him up. And they are asking this question, we are perishing, are you not concerned? And you can clearly understand the question, the question itself says, how much they are self-centered. And they are, they are separating Jesus and the disciples, they are separating themselves and they are asking, we are perishing, are you not concerned? It is the same boat, Jesus is also in the same boat, all the disciple, disciples are also in the same boat, but they are asking the question, we are perishing, are you not concerned? What, what are they trying to mean? You are the son of God, you will somehow escape. You will somehow escape. But we are perishing, we are dying. Are you not concerned? What am I trying to say through this? Rather, calling, rather than calling it as a mistake, probably I will, I will take it as a teaching, what the disciples understood through this incident was this. Any disciple will have, will be, will have to go through those fear, those emotions. Probably when you are traveling in a big boat or in a ship, you will be, there, there, there might be fear that would come to you. Definitely if you are traveling in the flight, you will be even more afraid. Because if you start your flight and before you end, in, before you reach your destination, you don't know what's going to happen. At the first, as soon as I reached Manchester at 7:40, the brother who came to pick me up, he received me and the first word that he spoke to me was, God has protected you. On the very same day, on the very same night as I was traveling, probably you have not read in the newspapers, the Malaysian Airlines MH 17 was shot down in Ukraine. So today there is something common among everyone, a common emotion and that is fear. Many people are start, started to think in a self-centered way, that Jesus will somehow escape, but we might, we might fall, we might perish, we might, we might die. And people always generally think, Jesus is the son of God, somehow he will escape, he will walk on water, he will fly and he can escape, unfortunately, the believers or the people who trust in him are not the people who could be saved. You need to concentrate on this. I am going to give the, a name for the disciples. I will call them disciples of fear. What is fear? Fear is the opposite of faith. When fear knocks at the door of your heart, the faith leaves your system. We need to re, understand from the word of God. If you turn your Bibles to Mark chapter 4. Before they could start the travel, before they could get into the boat and travel to the other side, Jesus is having a conversation with his disciples. On, in verse 35 in Mark, Mark chapter 4. Jesus says, Jesus said to them, let us cross over to the other side. Jesus did not say, let's start the journey and in the middle of, at the midpoint, let's crash. And he, our God is the God, he is the beginning and he is the end, the one who has started us, started, he will help us to finish it. And if you read the Bible, you can understand what he started in Exodus ends up in Chronicle. If God is the author of something in your life, he will be the finisher. And he is a God who will do wondrous miracles in our life. And Jesus rose up and he asked, why did you fear? And he asked, why, where is your, where is your faith? Why fear has come into your hearts? And he is asking, what happened to the faith that you had? Many people in the church as well live with fear. People live with problems and as they live with problems, the fear also grips them. It's not a great thing to be along with Jesus in the boat. The most important thing is the attitude when we are on the boat, that we will have the faith even though the waves might crush, even though there could, something that could happen to the boat, but still God will protect us. If you come to the church on a Sunday, that's good, but that alone is not a blessing. The most important thing is having the attitude of faith in all circumstance and all situations that God would not leave me and as we believe in every day in and day out, every month in month out, that is what God really desires. God has not given a, a spirit of timidity, but God has given us the spirit to call him as a father. You need to understand this. Fear is, is something that comes from the devil. And fear is not definitely a blessing in our life. The word of God clearly says that we need to fear and reverence only God. In spite of any circumstance and situation that comes against us, we need to have the faith and we need to face. I, I was praying for a girl. And as soon as I laid my hands on her and started to pray, she started to speak. And the demon who, which was inside her started to speak and she said, I have got life inside of me. Immediately I took my hands off. And I said to the lady, I am going to, I want to speak with you alone. There were many people in the queue, so I prayed for everybody and finally I came back to that lady. Again, I placed my hand on that lady and started to pray. And when I started to pray, she said, in, in me, I can feel life in me. And she, her face showed the emotions, she was afraid, she was filled with fear. I told her, don't, don't get agitated, be calm, relax. I told her, even in me, I also have life in me, so what should we do? There are people who have fear for no reason. Somebody came to me and asked and said to me, I am afraid that I might die. Some of the people who are, before they get married, they come to me and tell me that I am afraid to get married. Before the exam, the children come and they say, I am afraid of my exam. And there are people who are afraid to even pray, to come and approach a person who is anointed with the Holy Ghost. As we pray for one person, the other person wants to kindly subtly, move subtly from the other side. Now, fear is, is a, is, is from devil. You need to understand that faith is a gift from God. If you turn your Bibles to Psalms chapter 91 and verse 15. The Bible says beautifully. Let's read from Psalms chapter 91 and verse 15. Amen, he shall call upon me and I will answer him, I will be with him in trouble, I will deliver him and honor him. You need to, you need to understand the scripture. God is the God who saves us, who protects us. He is the God who blesses us. And he is the one who is going to lift us up. And he works behind the scenes and he works battles for us. So the battle is not ours, the battle belongs to the Lord and we don't need to be afraid of anything. Paul clearly says, to live for, to, to live is for Jesus and to die is a gain. And the lady came to me and asked me, if I die, what will I do? And I said to her, don't worry about anything, don't think about anything, just be calm. And she was astonished by my reply and she was looking at me. The question was wrong and so hence the, hence the answer also was wrong. What will you do after you die? You can't do anything. So you need to be calm, you just can't do anything about it. Sometimes people think hypothetically, the things that have not even happened, that might not even happen and they worry about things that might not even happen. There are so many things that you can think about when you are alive. But there are people who will, who are thinking, what will they do after they die? First, think about today, what you have to do today. The word of God clearly says, don't worry about your tomorrow because God has a control. Look to your neighbor, give your hand to the next person and tell them, don't worry about tomorrow. Worry about today, think, think about today. Don't be like those disciples. Matthew chapter 14 and verse 26. I would like to show you a second mistake that the disciples did. Again, the background is again the sea. Now, Jesus goes to the mountain to a decided place to pray. And Jesus told the other people to rush to the, to go to the other side. Again, as they are going in the sea, again there is a big waves that are coming, there is a tempest that happens. Now, Jesus is now coming and approaching the disciples because Jesus was not with them, so now he is coming right, right to, right into the sea to save them. And when they looked at him, probably they thought he is a ghost and they started to scream and shout. I am not talking about fear in this place. I would like to point you, I want to point out something that, it is, it is the way that they understood things, that's where the problem is. If, if somebody, if, if somebody can look at the person who is going to rescue us and we look at him and we think that is a ghost and we start to shout, nobody will do it other than us. The fourth, the fourth hour, if you, if you, according to the Jewish people, it is between 3 and, 3 and 6. It is early morning. And now, at the early morning, the we are, they are in the sea, there is a tempest and somebody has come to save them, indeed it is Jesus Christ and they couldn't understand, it was actually Jesus who has come to save them, instead of crying out for help, they started to, they started to think that it is a ghost and they couldn't understand correctly. You need to understand clearly. As soon as they saw Jesus, they started to shout. They were there with them, they dined with them. They slept with him. They have traveled along with Jesus everywhere. Indeed, a major portion of their time was spent along with Jesus. But they could, they couldn't understand Jesus. They couldn't understand the miraculous working power of Jesus Christ.
saw this, they said, why are you wasting, probably, this could be sold for a good price and this could be used to, to feed the poor.
Yes, the Christian, we are, we are not disciples.
Probably the disciples were more, uh, careful or, were more, um, uh, kind towards the poor than Jesus Christ.
Bible says, men, you know, neither man nor I.
The word of God says, don't be too, uh, self-righteous or too righteous.
You need to understand this.
We are not better than our masters. There is no one who is better than Jesus Christ. And if, if you want to read, if you turn your Bible into John, you can understand who said this. John chapter twelve. From verse three onwards, if you read. And he can read that it was Judas Iscariot who said to, to sell, uh, this oil and to, uh, and to give to the poor. And if you read continuously, you will understand that Judas was, was a thief. You know, more than a good man who could have good intentions, it's the thief who has got better intentions. There are some people who can give advice even to Jesus Christ. Probably, they think they, they are wise, wiser than Jesus Christ. The word of God tells you says, no one can be better than the master. We are all under Jesus Christ. Because we are his children. Their disciples were so, uh, so concerned and they said, let's break, sorry, let's not break this oil, let's sell this oil and give the money to the poor. Then is Jesus not concerned about the poor people? He is not, he is very much concerned about the people and that is the reason we read in many places that he fed five thousand people. He was the one who turned water into wine and brought peace in that ma- in that marriage because there was a chaos in that marriage. How will he not be concerned about the poor people? The problem is the person who said that, the person who said that was Judas and Judas was a thief, he wanted to get money on of it. Judas was always money minded and he, even in his dreams, he was just thinking about money. There are people even in the Christ tandem who think that money is, money is, is life. And if, uh, if they have to talk about prosperity, they will say everything about Jesus. Truly, Jesus is, is the fountain of all the blessings. Indeed, it is Jesus who blesses us. And indeed, his riches is upon us. Now, they are going to Jesus and giving him suggestions of what they need to do, how they need to work with that oil. What are they trying to do? They want their will to be imposed over God's will. Now, they are teaching Jesus Christ and they are saying, Jesus, this is what we need to do, learn this. And some people go and ask God, God, I need a four wheeler. Did God say, said that he will give you a three wheeler or not? Did, did God say to you any time that he will give you a five, five wheeler? Even the truck is four, has got four wheels. Four wheeler. And sometimes we go to God and ask, give me a four wheeler, God. When I started off the ministry, I started off in a very humble way. Uh, there was a lot of prestige problem in me. So I had a bike and my wife had a bike. And when we go to ministry, people ask, do you have a four wheeler? Generally, all the four wheelers, they go in the same, in the same intact, in the same way, but the four wheels that we have, two wheels will go one side and two wheels will go other side because it's the, it's the bikes. And many people ask me, how is it possible? My bike has got two wheels and her bike has got two wheels. So we have a four wheeler at our home. Why will you not accept that? They probably thought this guy is a very clever guy. Come for the three day camp and we'll talk more about it. And we will talk more about it. And let's not be people who will implement, who want to implement our will over God's will. Why did Jesus allow that to happen? We can read that in verse twelve, in the same chapter, because it was the anointing oil upon God's body before the burial. And God had a clear revelation, what's going to happen in the near future. And now he has got a clear purpose in his mind, he knows that in three days he is going to be killed and he is going to be, uh, he's, he's going to go into the grave and after three days he is going to, uh, rise again, so he had a clear purpose in his mind. But the, the disciples had a very clear vision, they wanted to sell that oil for three hundred, uh, uh, pounds and they wanted to spend that money to, uh, give to the poor. Don't get me wrong. First, seek the kingdom of God and his righteousness. I would like to end quickly. Fourth thing. Matthew chapter seventeen and verse sixteen. There is a boy who has been brought to God to be healed. The word of God says, the disciples could not do that miracle, do not, should not do that miracle. No, God has said, the person who believes in me will do greater things than me. But the word of God says in this place that his disciples, who are called by his name, were not able to do things for God. I would call them probably, uh, important, important disciples. They were, uh, they were not talented disciples, they were important disciples. And in my ministry, because I do, do a lot of deliverance ministry, I take these scriptures and I follow exactly what Jesus Christ has did in those days. Almost around about thousand five hundred people only in the last week I prayed for, for deliverance. And many people, uh, joined together. And still I, uh, the pain has not left my hand because I've touched many people and I've prayed and still I've got the pain in my hand. We pray for, for, uh, we pray with the burden for the lost souls, we pray for the deliverance for, of the souls. How did God call the disciples in Matthew chapter ten? And God has called them so that they could, they could, uh, be fishes of men, they could raise up the people from dead. He called them so that people, uh, could work, uh, people could work among the lepers and they could be healed. Jesus called them so that, uh, all the lepers could be healed. There is a purpose and a plan, why God has selected some disciples. The very purpose why God called his disciples was to heal and, and, and to, and to do great things. But the word of God says in Matthew chapter seventeen and verse sixteen, they were unable to, the disciples were unable to do a miracle. Sometimes we forget that God has called us. Sometimes we forget who our God is. I would like to show you an illustration. And in the year of two, in the year two thousand. And they brought, uh, Tantrik and they were trying to do some, uh, some kind of black magic or witchcraft in the house. And that ma- person was the deputy collector. And his daughter was, uh, on the bed and, uh, the next day morning, the blood was, uh, the, the bed was filled with blood. And the child, if you look at the child, all the, uh, all, throughout the body, there are scratches and the blood was oozing out. And they brought, uh, uh, a person, uh, Tantrik from Kashmir and he was brought to Bhuvaneshwar and they did this black magic. This is something that happens, um, quite often in India. And they gave, uh, twenty lakhs for this tantrik. So, to get this, to get the situation better, the deputy collector had no option but again go to the tantriks and he spent a lot of money in, 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 uh, to get it right. He has already spent twenty-five lakhs and still the situation did not improve. And in his house, if you look, uh, the coconuts, from, all the, from all the coconuts, the coconut trees, it starts to fall automatically. Sometimes, even the bricks will fall from the house. If, if what all that would happen today, probably it could be better because the inflation is so high. So that man was really terrified, was afraid. And they came to such a state because of the, uh, mental agony, they wanted to die. And indeed, they were all, uh, they were like all, uh, they were not, they did not have a clear mind. And one of the, uh, Tantrik said, tonight, all of you will die. And that, uh, Tantrik said, that this is the last day that you are going to be alive, tonight it ends and none of you will be alive. And around about twelve, uh, in the night and they called me and I went to that house to pray. And I kneeled down and I started to pray. And by, within three hours, God gave complete, uh, uh, deliverance for that family. Then they said, the Tantrik again called the house. And he, over the phone, he said, are you, are you trying to, are you, are you, uh, contact with Christians and you're trying to send me off? Even the tantriks know that when Christians pray unto the almighty God, the creator God, the creator God will work on their behalf, even the tantriks know they can't do anything against it. The God who is with you, who is not, uh, is, 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 uh, is a, is a, is an almighty God. He is a supernatural God, he works supernatural things. And God is, our God is not an ordinary God. Each one of you is a disciple. If you follow Jesus Christ, you are called disciple of Jesus Christ. Every one of you is a disciple. And the God who is with you is a powerful God. So don't worry about, uh, about sickness. Don't worry about your circumstances. But when it says that, you know, they were not able to do it and that's when it. So they go to Jesus Christ, the disciples went to Jesus Christ and in, uh, when he was alone, they asked why we were not able to perform. And Jesus simply said, it is your unbelief. So people who were with Jesus itself had unbelief, the problem of not able to believe and trust in the almighty God. Just think of this, you know, who, the person who was next to Jesus Christ, was not able to believe in Jesus Christ, if that was the situation, how would us? The people who witnessed, who saw Jesus Christ doing miracle after miracle after miracle, they couldn't believe Jesus Christ. Look to your neighbor and ask, what are you going to do? Will you have, how will you have faith? Some of you are thinking, so all of you believe that I'm going to end the message soon. Where you need to put your faith, you don't have the faith in that. In the three day prayer camp, in the first day, I'm going to talk about faith. Because it's very important, what we don't have is what we need to get and it's very important, because we don't have faith, we need to be filled with faith, so please do come. Once we get faith, then automatically it paves way for. God is saying, it, it, except by prayer and fasting. So that is, he, Jesus is saying, there is no prayer, there is no fasting and that is the reason why you are not able to do a miracle. So the devil, uh, or the demons are not going to be afraid by looking, uh, you know, at, at, at a lazy man or probably a prayerless man. Some people have a routine, they eat, they sleep and they get up, they eat, they sleep, then they do the same again and again. The demon, uh, will come and, you know, probably, they will have a very close relationship. I am sorry to say this word, sorry, you need to go and. Now, there was one, uh, you know, I was praying for somebody and I was praying for the deliverance and during that time, the demon inside of that person started to speak out in the same way. And I asked the, uh, demon, where, where do you come from? And he said, I come from a believer's, believer's family. I was thinking only you guys will provide accommodation, only for, believers will provide accommodation only for, uh, people who live, but then, uh, I mean, other believers, but people have started to accommodate even the devils. A person who prays, a person who fasts and who stays in the presence of God will do great and mighty things. Look to your neighbor. At least from today onwards, you know, correct those mistakes. These are small things and you can, it can be corrected quite very quickly. But it is, it is, the devil who is trying to show with the, the, the problems with us. The failure is lead to success. Failures are the stepping stones for success. Whenever I have failed in my ministry, I know that I have crossed one barrier and that will be a stepping stone for me for the success. And that's exactly what I'm teaching you today. Lastly, one more point. Let's start our Bible, so Matthew chapter twenty-six and verse. We, here we see about very good disciples. And many pastors who come here will always talk about the miracles that Jesus Christ did. Everything, uh, they talk about, you know, the disciples being like this, like that and they talk very great about the disciples. Whenever you talk, when, in a game, there are, there are positives as well as negatives. If you look at, there are two sides for the coin, obviously, if you look at only one side, you will find only the queen. Only when you look on the other side, then you will be able to understand what is the denomination of that coin. So today, the church is only wanting to see one side. There are nobody to point out the failures that we have in life so that we can understand from those failures. All the people who come are like, uh, they talk about, you know, they are super, uh. Amen. When there was a problem. When there is a problem, we don't need Jesus, we don't need ministry, we don't need anything at all. Some of them are ready to run away from UK itself. The little problem in money, there is little financial problem. There are people who don't have the patience to wait to receive something from God or to bear something. But whenever we were singing, we will talk about, you know, doing this, moving mountains and, uh, whatnot. But when problems arise. I don't know Jesus. And they will show somebody else and they will just move off from this. Listen carefully. The man who stands and faces those problems. Now, in this case, we, we see that, uh, there were Romans who came to arrest Jesus Christ when the disciples were together. Just a few, uh, few chapters, a few verses ahead, you will find that they, 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 they spoke great dialogues about Jesus, what they will do and how they will do and stuff like that. They, they said all the punch, punch lines and they said, we will not leave you, we will not persecute you, we will be with you, we will never desert you, we, we love you and so on and so forth. There is nobody who can say better words than Jesus Christ, I mean, better words. You will not forget this message. If you forget that, then probably that again will become mistake. When there was a problem, the, the disciples deserted Jesus. Whether they are naked or they are covered, they don't warn about it. There are people who would like to desert Jesus, they desert their faith, leave their faith and run away. There are people, uh, who, who believe that only if I deny Jesus Christ, then I will get my job, then probably, let's deny Jesus Christ, let's get a job. There are people who, they, they say, you know, unless Jesus gets out of the family, there will be no peace in the family, there will be no money in the family, unless Jesus goes out, there will be no peace, so they are ready to even do that. There are only few people who have got that faith and who can stand and face all those problems that. And these people are impotent disciples. Uh, these people are not steady at all in their faith, some of the disciples. So, it's very unfortunate today, even in the church, many people do not have a foundation, they are not stable at all in their work with God. Let's say an hallelujah. Free time, castle, I can't. Amen. Hallelujah. 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 I am going to end this sermon. And from the bottom of my heart, I'm telling you this. Please understand. All the instability, we need to leave that today. We need to be people who, whose life will be on the rock, solid rock of Jesus Christ. Our Christian life has to be steady, has to be strong. Whatever problems could come across, we need to be steady for Jesus Christ. We need to be passionate about Jesus Christ. There are many people who actually have put their lives on line and they do the ministry. If, if, if you say that you really love Christ, you need to come along with me and look at the ministry that happens in the north of India. Uh, you know, even in, in a tea shop, if you go, there is, there are guys who are sitting with, uh, guns, small boys. And there's no reason why they shoot people. And if the shoe is very good, they just, uh, steal it and they go. One side, there are Maoist terrorists. Again, there is police, um, on the other side, but they think that, uh, some of us are probably, uh, thieves and they kill us. Other side, there are tribals who are waiting to pounce on you as well. They don't understand and they think that we have come to harm them. There are people who will think that some, uh, you know, these people are going to convert, uh, so it's, we need to stone them. Even if you want to, uh, do some good things, still it will be very difficult. We all have, we all know about, uh, Graham Stein was burnt in the jeep alive along with the suns in the state of Oregon. There are many missionaries who lay their lives for the sake of Jesus Christ. Christian life is not a life when you put your hands on the plough and then turn back and run away. You need to keep running. You need to keep moving ahead and progress. Let's say hallelujah. Let's say hallelujah. One last point. Mark ten thirteen. Mark, let's turn our Bible to Mark chapter ten. It's a very beautiful verse. Then they brought little children to him that he might touch them, but the disciples rebuked those who brought them. But when Jesus saw it, he was displeased and said to them, let the little children come to me and do not forbid them, for of such is the kingdom of God. There were, uh, people who brought the little ones, little children to, to Jesus Christ. And the parents were so, uh, the parents were really interested that Jesus will touch them and will pray for them. And they had a belief that if Jesus touches them, probably they can, it will be good on their children. I'm asking the question, why are the disciples concerned when Jesus is going to pray for the little ones because the parents are interested? If somebody is going to be blessed, why are we, uh, jealous about it? He is going to pray and he is going to live well, so why are you jealous about it? The little ones and the parents are ready to be prayed and Jesus is willing to pray, so where is the problem? Now, God, Jesus is not asking the disciples have to man, give money to Jesus for Jesus to pray to the little ones. Why is it paining for you? Why are you so concerned about? Pray, unfortunately, uh, many people don't bother about themselves, do not worry about themselves, they are more worried about or more interested about the person who is seated next. They say that, you know, he is doing really well. And God has blessed him. And God is, uh, lifting him up. When he came, he was very ordinary. When he came, he was very ordinary.
இப்ப பாய் இருக்குறவா வாய்ட்டாரு.
But now God has blessed him so much.
மற்றவுங்கள் பத்தி பேசுறது என்னைக்கு நிருத்துவான் அம்மா?
When will we stop talking about us?
Say hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
I'm not evangelist. நான் சுவீசேசகனாலே. அமை. நானும் ஒரு சபை மெய்ப்பனா, மந்தைய மெய்க்கிற ஒரு போதகனா இருக்கறேன்.
I'm not an evangelist, but I am also a pastor of a church.
எனக்கும் திரிச்சோபைகள் உண்டு.
And I do have churches.
எனலா சபையின் பாரதை புரிந்து வில்ல மடியும்.
I can understand the burden of the church.
ஏசு சுகமாக்கிகிறார், ஏசு சுகம் தரிகிறார், அட்புதம் செய்கிறார், விடுதலிச் செய்கிறார், நன்மை தரிகிறார், பெற்றுக்கொடுத்து ரெசிம் ரெசிம் தான் போயிருவேன்.
And I will say, you know, God is going to do miracles, God will heal you, God will touch you, miracles will happen and then saying all those things, I will go.
இன்னைக்கு சர்ச்சு முடிஞ்சு உடனே உங்களுக்கு புடிக்காது உங்கக்கிட்டப் பை கை குடத்து, நீங்க பண்ணாந்து வால்க.
Today, after the church gets over, go to the person you hate the most in the church. If not here, probably ring them and tell them, you know, long live, long live.
இன்னும் ரொம்ப அலான தம்கில சொன்னா பத்து, பதனாரும், பெற்று, பெருவாளு, ஆய்க.
That's going to be very good.
வேண்டா வெற்பத்து சொல்ல நீக்க சந்தோசமா சொன்னுக்கே.
Bless them wholeheartedly.
அமை. Hallelujah.
Bless them wholeheartedly.
நம்ம கசப்பு இருக்குப் போடாது.
We should not have any bitterness in our life.
கசப்பு இருக்குவே கூடாது.
There should be no bitterness in our life.
கசப்பு வரக்கூடாது.
There should be no bitterness that should come in our lives.
மனிஷனுக்கு சுகர் வேணா வரலா, கசப்பு வரக்கூடாது.
You can get sugar, that's okay, but there should be no bitterness that should come.
ரத்துக்கள் மட்டும் கசப்பு வந்துச்சிப்போச்சி.
If the bitterness will come into your body, that's it.
மர்தை இல்ல.
There is no medicine for it.
காவணிங்க, மன்னிக்கிற சுவாவங்க இன்னு வரணு.
Forgiveness is a characteristic and that needs to come into our lives.
தாராலமான மனப்பான்மா வரணு.
Generosity needs to come today.
பரக்கு உதவிச்செய்கிற மனப்பகுமா வரணு.
To help others is a characteristic and that needs to come into our life.
சீஷர்களில் என்ன பணிருக்கணும், புல்லைங்களில் என்ன போய் லைன்ல நிக்குவச்சிக்கணும், தங்கங்களா இங்கு வா, இங்கு லைன்ல இல்ல, ஐயாக்கட்டப் பேச உம்மனிக்க, அப்படின்னே அவங்க ஆடர் பணிருக்கணும்.
The disciples should have worked and should have worked the logistics for the little ones because all the little ones were rushing, so they should have probably put them into right queues so that Jesus could touch them and pray them and love them.
அதோட்டு உட்புல கை வச்சிட்டு, நீ எல்லா ஜபிக்கவண்டியா, உன்தாலைகளா ஏசு கைவிக்கப்போறாரா.
Instead of that, you know, they put their hands on hips and they're thinking, you know, you all have come to pray, why have you come to pray?
அந்த கொளந்து ஜபிச்சுத்துக்கப்பறம் வந்த அந்த அங்குல பாத்து என்ன சொல்லிருக்கோ?
Imagine the situation of the little one, after Jesus would have prayed for the little one, that if the child would have returned back to those disciples. It would have been like this and probably it would have gone.
அமை. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
எ சர்ச்சில பெரிய problem என்ன தெரிக்கலா?
Do you know the biggest problem in the church today?
இன்னைக்கு ஒருத்தர்க்கு ஒருத்தர் விட்டுக்குடுக்குற மனப்பான்மை கிடையா.
Nobody wants to give up for the other person's interest.
ஒருவர் ஒருவர் பிளஸ் பண்ணது காண்டு சொல்லாரு, ஒருவர் ஒருவர் நீங்க ஆசீர்வதிங்க, ஒருவருக்காக ஒருத்தர் ஜபிங்க, ஒருவருக்கு ஒருவருக்கு உச்சாக பாருங்க, தாங்குங்க, தல்லிவுடாதீங்க.
And God is very clearly clear in his instructions that we need to uphold each other, we need to be together with each other, we need to motivate and encourage each other, not to destroy them, not to do something harm to them.